Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 16th, 2022. Ms. Allen, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you. We had a lot of different things going on, so we apologize for being a few minutes late. I think if you watched President Zelensky's speech today to Congress, or if you had a chance to watch it later, you know more than ever what horrific things are going on in Ukraine. We appreciate the fact that people in Erie are stepping up and responding in many ways to help as best we can, even though we're so far away, so we want to remember them. I don't know if there's anybody else who has anything to say for a meditation?
Longtime teacher in the Erie School District, Patty Shahowski, passed away. Rich was a longtime policeman for the city and also a school board member with me back in the day. Patty will be missed. She was one heck of a lady.
Thank you, Ed.
Moment of silence. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today, first of all grateful that you allowed us to assemble here, and we just ask that you weigh in on us with your Spirit, oh Lord, that we make prudent decisions on behalf of the city and of the city residents. We ask you to comfort those who mourn. We ask you, remember those who are the least fortunate among us. We ask this in your name, we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022, and bills for payment on March 18th, 25th, and April 1st. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of a repository sale? Anyone here for a repository sale? Anyone here for a repository sale? If this takes us to public comments, please remember to state your name and your address, and you're limited to five minutes.
This is Fred. I'm Freda Tepfer, 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I did not know that PennDOT was going to be in the caucus. I wasn't able to get there earlier, but I have never seen some of the things they handed out. I hope that those things are available to the public. I'm kind of curious, what is the winter maintenance going to be on the bridge over Holland? And the bridge, the proposed bridge on SASS, which now apparently has design funding, what is the access of this bridge? Who's going to control the access? Is it going to be controlled by the Erie Events? Or is it going to be open to the public all the time as it should be? So I am concerned that the city, we saw a non-atypical snow season. We have snow. This is, we are in the snow belt. We have snow. But yet we saw our city plows put huge piles blocking pedestrian call buttons, blocking access to intersections, to crossings. And we saw once again the same old businesses putting huge piles of snow in front of the sidewalk, in front of the crossings. We saw huge swaths of commercial property, commercial and nonprofit properties in the city. Green Garden, 38th, 26th, 18th, 12th, no plowing, no plowing, no pedestrian access at all. There's no reason for this. And now we have a whole big list of enterprise loans, ARP loans, all kinds of loans, all kind of R cap, LERTA. Nobody should be getting money from the city if they have a record of failing to maintain year-round access. We should make these businesses agree before they get the loans that they maintain year-round access. I know, for example, the commercial property on the west side of Green Garden between 16th and 12th, they never plow in the winter, and they have gotten enterprise loan phones, and they were rude to me on the phone. They said it was the city's job to plow that. And I know some of the smaller businesses that get flagship funds have failed to maintain their property in the winter. That should not happen. We should use that as an incentive, not just give people money and then let them walk away. We're quick to make sure that homeowners, if their grass is a little too high or if their paint isn't just right, and we have a bevy of inspectors out for them, it's time that we hire enough inspectors to address the issue of lack of decent pedestrian access in this city year-round. Also, I would please request that the city direct Pennalec to move their power pole on the west side of Green Garden between 12th and the Bayfront Connector. I've been told that they can do that. There's no problem. They just have to get some right of way and to move it. That sidewalk is not accessible to anybody who uses a wheelchair, who has a stroller, who has a walker, who might be blind, it'd be difficult. That's the only sidewalk access for those people, people in my neighborhood trying to get to the park. It's not fair that Pennalec is refusing to move that power pole, and I'm asking you folks to please direct Pennalec to do something. Public Works has been unable to do it so far. Thank you.
Madam President, Ms. Tepfer, on what corner is that pole, please?
The pole is in the middle of the sidewalk on the west side of Green Garden between 12th and Bayfront Connector.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut Street in Erie, PA. I'm here today to talk about two things, the American Rescue Plan as well as the PAL program. With the American Rescue Plan, I talked to a few people, and they told me as far as money that has been given to the restaurants, there's like a zone that has been developed. And if their business wasn't within that zone, they weren't going to get a dime or couldn't get a grant. I think that is a little bit unfair. I think it's a lot unfair, to be honest, because everybody had to deal with the same problems. They dealt with COVID. They dealt with the loss of people working. They dealt with curbside, leaving food on the curbside, people coming in, picking up their meals and so forth. And I go to different places to eat in town, and I asked them, "Did you get anything?" The one place I went to, they said no, because they were one block or two blocks out of the zone. There's like a map that was drawn, and they had to be within that zone. But the American Rescue Plan is for Erie. Erie is the zone of Erie. That's the zone. And that's how the zone should be drawn. If it's drawing anything different than that, I like, somebody should know why. Somebody on city council, whatever, should know why. Every restaurant should be able to take advantage of that program. The monies that are being given to the restaurants by the federal government, the restaurants, that was added last. They added $1.9 trillion whereby restaurants can be included to take advantage of so that they can recoup some of the money they may have lost. I don't think there should be anything drawn to say if you don't live within this zone. The one person said this, told me, he said, "Well, the city has their own personal preference of who they want to serve." And I said, "Well, you need to come down here and talk to them like I do. Just come down here and tell them yourself," you know? But he told me that the city has their own personal preference. The American Act has nothing to do with anybody's preference, any plans that you might have had in 2016 of how you wanted the city to be or whatever. This is today. This is dealing with today. So that needs to be looked in, looked at again, and those places that have not been added need to be added. I'm going to talk about the PAL program. I had the fortune of a three-star, wait a minute, was it three? Five-star General stopped at my house, came to my house. I was very surprised. I had rented to his son, and his son told him about me. He came to see me. He wanted to know what was I doing. I told him that I wrote a pre-apprenticeship training program for youth ages 18 to 24. Now, some of us use the word youth in the wrong way. The PAL program do not provide a service to youth. They provide a service to young schoolchildren. Youth is either 16 to 24, and that is not working. 18 to 24, if they're working. Now, I wrote a lot of programs, not just for myself, for Central City NADAL, for JCCAC, for where I worked at, FlexiPlan. I worked with the government, buying and so forth. And that isn't the proper term for the PAL program. But I will say this for the PAL program. I've always had good things to say about the PAL program. Never had anything bad to say about the PAL program. This five-star general told me that more attention should be given to these young girls. The PAL program does that, and that's why I like the PAL program. But the PAL program got to reach further than just these kids going to the sixth grade, and they're forgotten. You can't do that to them, for them to continue with their thoughts. So I hope the PAL program will extend itself, have a summer program or something for these kids, a camp or whatever, and try to recruit some more girls and try to get some older girls into that program. And one more thing, as far as recruiting of minorities to get into the police department, I talked to maybe about 50 minority young men. And the first thing they told me was they have no inclination or want to even be a policeman. And I asked them why, and it comes from when they were a kid, what their father had told them about the police department. They said to me that a black man coming to recruit them would do no good because they're not, this is about 50 kids. Because my kids are young people. They're 40 to 52. When I go through their homes, they have their friends there, and I talk to their friends about being policemen because I feel they're pretty decent. They should be policemen.
Mr. Bibbs, we're going to ask you to wrap up, but we will follow up with you because there is a program coming up on March 22nd here to recruit women for the public safety jobs. We'll make sure that you know about that.
I heard it on the news.
And we'll make sure that your recommendations on PAL get to the right ears, okay?
All right. I appreciate that.
Okay. We're always glad to have you here. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Lamont Higginbottom, 4331 Briggs Avenue, Erie, Pennsylvania. Wanted to address this city council tonight as we prepare to allocate funds to businesses in the city of Erie, that we are cognizant of the purpose of these funds and the vision of our mayor concerning the American Rescue Plan funds. That is to help bring about awareness of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and to help businesses that suffered throughout the pandemic as well as to help the underserved and underprivileged in our community. One of those noted businesses in our city, I believe it's called Andy's Pool House or Andy's Bar and Pub, certainly has some issues with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I would ask that we are really careful in our allocation of funds on today so that, one, it is fair across the board. I believe that businesses have suffered during this pandemic. I believe that businesses that do good in this city have felt the sting of COVID-19. We need to help those businesses. But on the same token, we are pushing for a more equal and racially diverse city and community. We cannot support businesses that are antithetical to the goal of certainly this city council and our mayor. We want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to bring about equality in this great city. And I want to thank this city council for, first of all, for the diversity that sits before us. And second of all, for supporting the vision of our mayor and the very spirit of Erie. And that is, I believe in my heart, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you for hearing me on tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kathy Schaff, 2437 East 43rd Street, Erie, Pennsylvania. And I want to thank you for your commitment to the city. And Mayor Joe, I want to thank you for the media presentation that you have. I've been watching so many meetings at home. I saw you today with the people who are interested in joining the Army, and that was something new and different that I've never seen before. There's about 13 people, and how nice that the Army generals or what have you were here to speak highly and get them excited about joining the Army. I also have been watching some other meetings, and I want to thank Ed Kissel, who I think is out in the audience today. And I want to thank him for attending meetings in person, and his institutional knowledge of the city is absolutely astounding, amazing, and inspirational. And he definitely will say something when he feels the need to address something, and I'm so thankful for that. I also have two things to talk about today, and one I didn't even expect to. It's beautiful weather, and Larry and I are about walking again, and it's our usual walk. Stop at the Dobbins Landing, walk along the Bayfront, back to Dobbins Landing. And we did that about 6:10 this evening, and it was a peaceful walk. Up until about 6:30 or so, we were near the Bayfront Convention Center area, and then, uh-oh. The revving of the motorcycles is back in town. And we're talking not just little. It was really... And we're talking not just little, it was really extremely loud, and they were down there, and they were just revving and revving and revving. And I counted a couple of them, and I ended up calling the non-emergency number. Thank you for having that. And I told the police, you know, I hate to say it, it's that time again where we need to be back down at Dobbins Landing. Because if I were at one of those businesses having dinner, and you can even hear it if you're paying attention, they come by when we're having our meetings, and they just did it a little bit ago. They're extremely loud, and they're really racing, too. So there were people walking their dogs and everything. It's starting to get nice, and even though Dobbins Landing is in two lanes, people are already going down there. So talking about the construction going on there, you know, it's all well and good, and we need to have it. And I'm excited about the tall ships, but how is the construction, is it going to be over with? I'm wondering, because August 25th, the tall ships will be here. If I were from out of state or for out of town, and I were coming to visit, and then I couldn't get down there because of all the congestion, I wonder how that's all going to play out. When I was on vacation one time with Larry, the hotel actually emailed us and said, we are having construction issues, yada, yada, yada. So we were aware on our vacation, knowing that this is what's going to happen. So it gives you like insight to noise, congestion, times of entry and whatnot. Another thing I wanted to talk about is garbage, and I know I've addressed it with some council. And so my husband said, it's just like a bomb went off in certain areas. And he does his walk every day at lunchtime along the Lower East Side. And I'm not just saying it's there, it's along the industry quarters and that. So I was thinking, if we had, you know how like First Night Out, and everybody gets really excited about First Night Out? And if we had like all of the parks and do like a big day event where every park has volunteers, where they're going to be giving out pop, water, grilling hot dogs, and have one day where people can meet at the parks, grab their bags, what have you, and then go out, and then like make it fun. So maybe have music playing, but again, this is not First Night, it's Garbage Night or Garbage Day, Garbage Saturday or something. But make it a real clever name and make it like a type of festival. You have to make it fun. So I guess I can't say anymore. God bless you. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. You know that there did used to be the Great American Cleanup, and I think that might have been on hold during COVID, but we can find out about that. That usually took place in April, so I'll follow up on that for you. Any other comments?
I don't know if there's anyone online.
Anybody else from the audience going to come up and speak?
Oh, am I the last one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm here just in time. Show you my face.
I can.
Can I lower this?
Yes.
Do I need to keep it up while I'm speaking?
No, that's okay, yeah. You can lower it to talk, but don't forget to say your name and your address, okay?
Okay, thanks. Liz, Lenny Anderson, Lenhart Anderson III, President, Bayfront Action Group. But most of yous know me as Lenny Anderson. So a few issues, so sharpen your crayons.
What's your address, Liz?
417 West Front Street, 07. So first issue, and they're not in order, so you can sort it out. The park on West Front Street that has a roundhouse, it's owned by the city and leased to the Water Authority to store water to flush out the sewers along the Bayfront. But that's going to become obsolete pretty soon because the Water Authority has obtained money for new pumps. So they're going to be using pumps. So that whole area right there, and I've been there, I've lived and owned there for a quarter century, been hanging around there for over a half a century. I've never seen anybody using that park. And the roundhouse will be obsolete pretty soon, so let's make use of it, because nobody's ever used that park. Lease it to somebody else because the Water Authority will not need it soon. Or sell it, one of the two. You have the wisdom about that. So that's the first thing. And Pontiac Field, which is close to there, the baseball field at the Bayview Park, is used 99, is unused 99.9% of the time. And I wish kids would be playing ball there more. I love seeing kids playing ball and whatever maybe, whatever they call that game, lacrosse. Use that for something. And then also, when it's not in use, let it be a dog park. It's in center city where nobody has a yard to speak of, and dogs need to socialize to become more peaceful with each other. So let's put that on the think about tank. And then, this is something that I've been talking to everybody about, and Liz, you know about this, and Pendott does, about the obsolete manhole covers. There's a lot of them in town, and they're sinking in, and they're year-round manhole covers. And I'm pretty good at dodging them, but not everybody is. And it's, you know, we could do a lot of savings on, but we have to locate all the ones that are obsolete, take out the metal because new asphalt will not stick to that metal, backfill it, right, Liz? Backfill it with stones, compacting stones, and then pave over them. And Ethan Lincoln is a real good example of that one, because that plate rocks back and forth. It's a real terror. So, and then, let's see. I don't want to get sidetracked by something lesser than that. Okay, the curb bump outs that we have, like on Parade Street, Lower Parade Street, very terrible for the people that have to plow and clean the streets. And they're just in the way, they serve no purpose. So I propose that we eliminate those and pave them back straight the way they've always been for hundreds of years. Streets, I hear streets in the background. So, let's see. Well, this is kind of minor, but it could be major, though. Police cruisers, I think, could park half of the time, like in high-crime neighborhoods, instead of just driving, driving around. That's no threat to a criminal, but if I was a criminal and I had a car sitting in front of my house from time to time, in, you know, whatever neighborhoods, you know, I might become a little bit more apprehensive about being a criminal. And that'd save a lot of gas and, you know, whatnot. And then about these people texting and using their phones on the road? Come on. I light them up. If they pull up next to me at a light, I light them up. I roll down my window and I go, hey, off the phone, man.
Lenny, that's a good note to end up on, because...
That's it. That was the last of my...
Okay, thank you.
Thank Liz for my time. Thank you so much. Mayor Joe, all the rest is, I know you, I know all yous. Thank you for your time and getting dressed up. How about the collar and your blazer?
Okay, is there anybody else to comment?
I have no clue if there's anyone.
Okay, is there somebody in there from CAM that I can ask? Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
No one on. I texted Frank wherever he is, and he said, no one's on.
No one's on? As long as Frank says there's no one on, we can, let's wait till the mayor comes back, though, and make sure. No one's on, okay. So we are moving on, Lori, thank you.
Okay, ordinances for final passage. Council file number 16267, official ordinance number 8/2022, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $50,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from the Business Development Fund for utilization in the flagship Commodore Fund, sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, maybe. Council, see, council pass official file ordinance 8/2022, finally. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Council pass official file ordinance 8/2022 by yea seven nay zero. Council file number 16268, official ordinance number 9/2022, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $925,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof in the paving and sewer revenue fund, Fund 017, for the West 8th Street multimodal project, sponsored by Mr. Troop, seconded by Ms. Flores. The council file bill number 16268, and now known as official file ordinance 9/2022, be finally passed by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council pass official file ordinance 9/2022 by yea seven nay zero. Maybe he was on his phone. Council file number 16269, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $15,000 from appropriated and anticipated revenue from the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, PIMA, for thermal imaging equipment, sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance number 16269, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16269 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16270, an ordinance closing and vacating the portion of West 20th between Burst Avenue and Hayburger Avenue, sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance number 16270, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16270 by yea seven nay zero on first reading.
And Lori, I just noticed that we were missing a number three in front of council file number 16271. Do you see what I mean? We go from 16 to 70, and then, just so, in case anybody's following along on their agendas, so...
We'll put that on the minutes.
So, thanks. Thanks, I just wanted to make sure.
Council file number 16271, an ordinance closing and vacating the portion of West Lakeview Boulevard, unimproved from Elliott Road to Sassafras Street, sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Keys. The council file ordinance number 16271, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16271 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16272, an ordinance closing and vacating a portion of Myrtle Street from north of West 16th Street to the railroad corridor, sponsored by Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Mr. Troop. The council file ordinance number 16272, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 16272 by yea seven nay zero Okay, this takes us to new business.
Our president moves balance.
Separations?
Number five.
Number what?
Five.
Other separations?
Doesn't have a number. Under transfers to the race. And number four, under contracts.
Did you get that one, Lori, the transfer?
Yes. Holman is the one, Mr. Keys?
But there was another one, there was the one on, I think it's the ARP transfer, Act expenditures, is that the one?
You just did race. That transfer, was there another one?
For the good of the order, separate number 11.
Did you have another transfer? I only have one pulled. Did anybody have another one?
Another what?
Another transfer.
It's on the fourth page.
That's the only one I pulled. Was there another one? Okay, and under contracts.
Should have separated five, right?
Voting on moving the balance of the agenda, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. We have a resolution sponsored by Mr. Keys, seconded by Mr. Nelson, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Revenue Committee approval of the following restaurant and entertainment industry relief ARP grants be formally ratified. Discussion? Do you want me to read them all?
No.
Discussion?
You're number four right now. I didn't say the four down somewhere.
It's number five, we're on number five.
It starts with Andorra's Bubble?
Yep, yep. That's the appropriate spot to address Reverend Higginbottom's concerns. I was talking to a friend about it yesterday, and there's undertones that exist that you see at times, that sometimes I see as overtones. And sometimes conversations that happen where you kind of get the implications, and sometimes those conversations happen more directly for a man like me. and sometimes those conversations happen more directly for a man like me. And I'm sorry about your experience and I see it in various different ways. I mean, I had dinner before I walked in tonight and I went to a restaurant that only accepted credit cards. And as a pastor of a guy with a lot of homeless guys in my church, you know, that we work in the same field, I know why they only take credit cards at that spot. It's so the guys that I give cash to don't get seen eating there, their money is no good. You know, I see these things and I see how they get addressed in certain settings. I know Philadelphia just passed an ordinance prohibiting restaurants from stopping people from bringing in credit cards. And that's not exactly the same as yours, but it's the same as yours. And so I just want to take a second to separate that because I'm still going to vote in favor. We don't have a mechanism to identify implied racism in our structure that. And before I vote in favor, I wanted to take a minute to apologize for that because I am conflicted on it. That's all.
Madam President? Liz?
Yes, I was looking this way because I wasn't sure.
Oh, I just have a question, a point of order. These people are getting $5,000. Do they still have to be presently working as a company or whatever? Or are we just giving them money that they lost during the pandemic?
I can't find Three Guys Chicken.
Okay. Not mentioning names, look at number four. Just a question, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. You're open, okay.
Yeah, I couldn't find the...
Thank you.
The Three Guys Chicken, I couldn't find them online, I don't know. I guess they exist.
Who are they, where are they?
Yeah. Discussion, I guess, has anyone ever heard of Three Guys Chicken?
No, Chris Groner did tell us. Sometimes there are, I think, business names that might be different than the actual operation. I know that when Chris Groner talked to us earlier tonight, he talked about going through the extensive process they went through. They had to have their business code, they had to show their tax returns, so. I don't know exactly where Three Guys Chicken is though.
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to speak again. I'd like to speak to the elephant in the room. Halfway down, there is a business called Andy's L House. And it was a source of controversy this weekend. And looking at, while I'm saying this, I'm for dress codes. I wear my pants affixed with a belt. And 99% of the time, I will not be in athletic attire. But if I wanted to go someplace and I happened to be out and it's a casual place, you know, I'd like to be accepted, you know. I was in, what's the one on top of the rooftop? The rooftop the other day and people were there in jeans and in stretch jackets and it's arguably, you know, the most expensive place in our city. And so I'd just like to say that whether it's, whether it's implicit bias or outright bias, when I see someone who says a sign that my pants can't bag and I cannot wear gang colors in a city like this, I would like to know, one, what gangs we have, what their colors they are, so that I can navigate away from them. Those, that information isn't readily available and it leaves a place for, hey, if you're wearing blue, that could be your color. And so I don't know how this was put together, but I hope that somebody would give them better direction on how to achieve what they're trying to achieve. If you wanted a certain clientele, there's ways to achieve certain clientele. If you, that don't discriminate against others or implicitly or explicitly. And so I think that when you have saggy pants twice, three times in bright red letters, I think that whether you meant to hurt someone's feelings or not, you hurt a cross-section of this community that happens to be part of their culture. And so I, it'd be my hope that this is a time that we can look at these types of things within our city and under a broader context and under a broader lens and figure out what's truly going on in our community. Because, you know, I buy into the mayor's, I want a welcoming community and that's welcoming for everybody. And, you know, our, you know, I'd say our, my pastor is not from Erie and he's only been here a couple of years and he went to the place and not knowing about the dress code. And there's a way to deal with everything. And I hear that they, the person, well, I won't get in the hearsay, but I hope that this can be addressed and I hope that we don't find businesses within our welcoming city who have policies that are not welcoming to everybody.
I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Keys said. When I saw this on Facebook, I knew it sounded familiar and most people know that I used to work at the newspaper and I knew that we had done stories about this. Not this particular place, but in 2007, there were similar complaints about the cell block, which is now closed. And so I found the story and I then Googled and I know this is an issue that has arisen in other communities. I found conversations about this in Austin, in Baltimore, in northern Jersey. So I think what has happened is that it reminded us of things that we need to be cognizant of. I have, this is a lived experience that I won't have. Although, one of the things when you go back and you look at dress codes, you know, women also used to be excluded. I went to the Erie Club one time, not that I hang out at the Erie Club. I think I went there to cover a story and I had a denim jacket on and they said, ma'am, you can't wear denim here, so I had to hang it up. That was nothing compared to some of the other experiences, but I just want to thank everybody who's been part of this conversation because it's something that we know has happened in Erie at other times and is happening elsewhere, so. But I also know that, and I couldn't remember the name of the club, the jazz club that used to be where Cloud Nine is, which had an African-American proprietor. She also had a dress code and I haven't found that story yet, but... So it's been a long time since we've talked about this. It's good for us to talk about it again and then we'll figure out how to do better as a community.
Madam President, thank you for this time to speak. I wrote down some things. First of all, I want to say my experience at the place has been different and I'm not going to make any, you know, less of what happened the other day. But I'm just personally, you know, my band played there in the past for years and, you know, the owners treated me with the utmost respect. And people know that my band is basically all black. You know what I mean? So they, you know, they treated us well. So I did go back and look at the Facebook post that was out there, that was put out. And I read through it just to see how, you know, because I wanted to have some background. I know that there was an incident in which Reverend Higginbottom went there and he was asked to leave because of he was wearing sweatpants or whatever he was wearing. He also indicated in his post that he had went there several times before that. And to me as a man, if I'm going to take my family somewhere and go back there again, I must have had some level of like of the place or satisfaction at that point before this incident that came up. He also did indicate in his post that he felt that there are some strong undertones of undertones on the dress code. I also looked at the list that we have today. There's like 15 other bars on there. Okay, 10 to 15 other bars on the list. Does this incident spark us to look at all, to see if they all have a dress code? You know what I mean? Because what if they have the same dress code listed in their place? So that would be something I would look at. Also, I would like to see, like, people, I work for the school district, so people will say the school district is racist. And you can say that, but what the school district did is they put together a study, like a year's study, where they said, let's see how kids are disciplined in the Erie School District. And after a year, the information, the numbers show that black kids were suspended at a higher rate, given detention at a higher rate. So it'd be interesting to go on some of these businesses that are getting this money to go in and have like a team of people that regulate their interactions for like a six-month period or whatever it is. And then before they apply for this money, you can give them the data and say, hey, you can't apply right now because your business is showing that, you know, you had 200 interactions based on our team's data and 190 of them were against blacks or against Hispanics or whatever it is. You know what I'm saying? That way you have some proof and not just one incident. You have a big body of proof, kind of like the school district did. So I don't know if we go back now, you know, and I'm not lessening what happened to Pastor Higginbottom at all. You know, I was there with my sons about a month ago and they, I didn't know either that they had a dress code because when we were there, we were normally dressed up. So I have some sweats on. And when I was, when I sat down, the waitress said, she did say to me, she said, sir, she said, I don't know if you know it or not, but we do have a dress code, you're not allowed to wear sweats. She said, since you're here with your sons tonight, I will allow you to stay and have dinner here, but next time you come, you need to be in dress code or we will not allow you in. So that was about a month ago that happened to me actually there. But I think that, you know, we need to put together some type of system to be able to test and see like if, you know, if somebody's showing that they're slanting one way, you know, racially profiling, whatever it is, they can't get this money. Until they can prove that they've taken some training, they train their staff, they've improved this situation. Maybe they met with the people, like, you know, like the sports leagues do, you have to, you know, meet with whoever it is that is determined and take some sensitivity training or wherever it is. But, you know, just one incident is probably going to be hard, difficult to prove that because it's only one incident. And then like, you know, if you look at that, the dress code, you know, one of the things that was on there, for example, was wearing a wallet on a chain. You know what I mean? Or satanic sayings on a shirt or vulgar language or, you know, stuff like that. So some of that stuff, you know, if we were saying categorizing into black and white, I would say, you know, you had a wave cap, that might be pretending to me. But wearing a chain on a wallet, I don't know too many brothers that do that. You know what I mean? So I think we need to look deeper into it. I think there needs to be some type of investigative body that can determine like, hey, you know, right now, you're not, you're not going to qualify right now and this is why, because our team found this. And until you can correct this, you won't be able to apply right now. That's what I would say about it.
And so Mr. Troop, you're saying for, because we did find out that there will be additional applications available. You're talking about doing that criteria for going forward?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments, response?
I mean, I personally have only been to that establishment maybe two or three times. In my experience, I was in Scrubs on a lunch break when I was there and we didn't have any problem. So I personally, when I seen the notice of the dress code, I normally try to stay clear of establishments that have blatant protocols to be able to enter an establishment because I feel as though if you want to enter an establishment, you shouldn't have to follow specific rules in order to spend your money there. So for me personally, I know a lot of younger people don't necessarily patronize that bar due to the fact that there are such strict rules for the dress code. So I do definitely believe that we need to look into this situation because as a young minority woman, racism is the elephant in the room in a lot of conversations and a lot of areas in our community and we definitely need to address it if we want to be more progressive and inclusive and diverse for the future generations. So I definitely want to do some investigation on our end to make sure any future applicants are as inclusive as they should be.
Anybody else? I really want to thank everybody for, starting with the member of our public who spoke to us and members of council who, every good opinion was expressed here. But we didn't just say, this is how we feel. We came up with an idea to how to go forward and that's a really good reflection of how this council has been working together. Good ideas and we'll be doing more than just talking, so. I think we might be ready to vote on that one Lori, unless there's anything else.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Motion passes yea seven nay zero. We have number 11. A new business. A resolution sponsored by Ms. Allen, seconded by Mr. Keys, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Eagles Nest Leadership Corporation, 1129 Pennsylvania Avenue, Erie, Pennsylvania 16503, for the ARP Community Development Initiative Grant for Gymnasium Project for the Finance Department at a total amount of $675,000. Discussion?
I just wanted to make sure that the plans that are going forth, I did see the email from Renee letting us know that there was going to be additional funding from privatized companies and that the price tag was a lot more than what we are giving. So I just want more information as far as, you know, every stakeholder who's going to be involved with this specifically, like which company and which organizations are pretty much giving money to be able to get this gym for the Eagles Nest? Is pretty much what I want to know. And who's all contributing to that bigger price tag?
I believe that information is really available. Good question. Call for a question?
I'd like to speak. So while I am for the project, this is a considerable investment, you know, into our community. And what I hope is that there's some kind of plan for a partnership with the community where that, as Mr. Bibbs talked about, the youth, that people above school age are allowed to use this facility and that this can also be a way to steer people away from potential crime, potential mischief and have things for them to do. And so I have yet to see that, but I hope if it's not in the plan, that there's a build-out to use this facility. out to use this facility for, to maximize its ability to touch the most people that it can. And so as we are giving the lion's share of the funding for it, I want it to benefit the most city residents that it can.
Last time we voted on this, I was a little more nervous because it was like when we first got in and I hadn't had the time to do the research. Bishop Brock was very accessible, gave four hours of his time hanging out with me, going through all of the details, showing me the drawout of what it would be, discussing the plans for it, and much of this information is very easily accessible and can be shared
Mr. Troop?
Madam President, many of these gray hairs came from working with 2,000 teenagers for the last. But anybody who's, you know, the teenagers today are not the teenagers of the 90s, they're not the teenagers of the 70s, of the 50s. Anybody who's, you know, I work with teenagers every day, you know, 8:00 in the morning. This morning, we get called in the back because something's going on. Anybody who has the guts to work with kids on a daily basis, you know, I'm willing to support an organization that's willing to do that because, I mean, you can either connect with them now or we're going to connect with them in five years in a bad way. So let's try to curb that any way we can possible. Like Michael said, hopefully it will be accessible to a lot of different people, you know, on a lot of different programs so that we can, you know, help them go on a positive pathway in their life.
Any other comments or are we ready to vote?
I would just like to add one thing. When you're talking about Bishop Brock, you're talking about the gold standard. This man has done so much for the East Side already, from programming Prince Rogers with Hammett to other places all the way around. He's always got an eye out. He even wanted to try to get Roosevelt and have a school, a boarding school. He couldn't get the financing for it. Whatever he does, I'm totally behind him. Thank you.
I think we're ready, Lori. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Resolution passes, yea seven, nay zero. We have a transfer resolved by the Council of the City of Erie, the following amounts be, and are they, be, and they are hereby transferred in the Department of Finance, American Rescue Act funds from the RACE ARP to the RACE budget, total of $2,262,300. Discussion?
Yeah. Yeah, I'd just like, for the record, I would like to say I believe it's a mistake to give a organization all the administrative fees for a four-year program upfront. I don't know why this wasn't asked, but I think that, you know, if you're going to build out a program and you're going to hire people, you're going to have yearly costs, and you can draw on from your accounts yearly, to give them the entire amount upfront, I believe is irresponsible on the part of, I guess I have to take partial blame for that, but I believe it's irresponsible, and I don't think it would sit as a best practice anywhere. Someone told me to put it like this, when you hire a contractor, do you give them the full amount of money before they start or do you give them half of the money and let the program or let the project proceed before you give them, you know, the other half of the money? We see stories all the time where contractors took a draw and never came back. And I think that in a certain kind of way, we are putting ourselves in that kind of exposure where we won't be able to recall that funding if this organization does not execute as we wish. Thanks.
Thank you. I just want to make clear that the organization we're talking about is the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie, an independent authority but housed within City Hall. It has a board, it has a liaison from City Council. ARP funding has really strict reporting practices. I think we heard at the State of the Union message that if there were to be any fraud, that the federal government is prepared to crack down. So I have confidence that between the board members, the executive director, the oversight provided by having a liaison from City Council and from the administration and the fact that we have an ARP coordinator working for us, that we will make sure that there is good oversight on this. Anybody else?
I was excited to see our ARP coordinator emails right before meeting saying that our housing plan that's going to be going through this authority is being a model for others' place in the state and being, you know, amplified throughout our Commonwealth.
Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Motion adopts by yea seven, nay zero. We have a resolution under contracts. Sponsored by Mr. Brzezinski, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to issue an agreement to Haldeman Chevrolet, 1925 State Street, Erie 16501, for a 2022 Chevrolet Silverado 250 HD four-wheel-drive crew cab work truck for the Bureau of Police Training Unit at a total amount of $39,295. Discussion?
I feel like I, well, six months ago, six months ago, it would seem like I was beating a dead horse, but now with gasoline nearly $5 a gallon, I still pose the question, are we going to buy another fully gas-powered vehicle without taking further time to, my recommendation would be to take further time to look into alternatives to buying this vehicle that's fully powered by gasoline, not just the environment. Now we're talking about it's going to put stress on the city's budget, power gasoline-powered vehicles, so.
Mr. Keys, thank you. You have brought this up many times, and we haven't responded in a way to be able to get the information. I think it would be helpful if we had somebody ask the chief. We talked earlier in our caucus about how we fund capital projects. It would be helpful, maybe mayor, maybe you could convey it, or maybe Ed Brzezinski, you know, as the chair of the Public Safety Committee, maybe ask the chief, could he give us a list of, you know, both the fire and police departments, what their capital, and maybe Chuck, also talk to Public Works, what are we looking for this year? And I've been trying to send some stuff to Michael about EV vehicles, so he's right, we should at least get an answer, other than, you know, kind of twiddling our thumbs every time. I'm not ready to say, don't do this one tonight, but let's figure out how we can ask the questions and get some answers and figure out how we go forward on this, okay?
I think that's a real good point, and it's also a good point to realize that we don't know a whole lot about the electric part of it. You know, pro-environment's great, but how much is a charging station going to cost us? How many charging stations are we going to have to have? What happens when a battery goes dead on the road? You can't put more gas in the tank. There's a whole lot of things that we don't know about, but it's a good thing to be looking at. I think, I just heard the other day that Volkswagen is talking about having a electric truck plant someplace in America.
Yeah, I think Tennessee maybe is supposed to create a lot of jobs. So why don't we give ourselves a deadline, maybe not for the next council meeting, but maybe our second council meeting in April will be close to Earth Day, so why don't we see if we can come back with a report by then and we'll have, we'll get the motion to, maybe a formal motion, but also the locomotion to get going on this so that Michael doesn't have to beat the dead horse every time there's a vehicle on here. And maybe we actually get some progress, so you think that's good?
Well, that's the powers that be, who would be the powers that be that can make this report for us?
Yeah.
I guess Public Works and the chief. I'll talk to you, buddy Chuck.
Sounds like a plan. I guess we're ready, Lori, to vote. Voting on the resolution, Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen. Motion passes, yea seven, nay zero. This takes us to committee reports. For committee reports, I've been trying to vary who goes first, and so I think I did left or right, I did alphabetical from eight, whatever, B to, and then I, from the other way, I'm going to just start. I just moved everybody around, so Ms. Flores, if you can go first, we'll do Ms. Flores and then Mr. Keys and then Mr. Nelson, so, and then we'll keep going, so.
I honestly don't have much to report. I did have an in-depth conversation with the EMTA CEO, Mr.
Peterson?
Peterson, yes, Jeremy Peterson, and David Robinson. That was last Wednesday. We have a lot of things that we have to get going in order to get the accessibility that we need for our community. They explained to me that in order to have Sunday service, they have to have the whole facility open and operating, so the whole cost of the day and everything would be going. So that's pretty much the justification on why they have X the Sunday service. Right now, they're trying to get it back on, but they're having staffing issues along with other, you know, businesses. I don't have much to report for the Blighted Property Committee. I did not make that meeting last Wednesday or today. My days are blending, I apologize. And that was pretty much it. I did have a meeting with Amy, and we're talking about IT tech innovation, so that's hopefully good things coming our way soon as far as what we have planned. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Keys?
So I probably, I actually did make the Blighted Property Review Committee meeting, and they are continuing to take action on Blighted Properties. We also had a field trip with, we also had. We also had a field trip with Erie Events and the Convention Center Authority where we went through the convention center and the ball field and had an educational session. It was very informative, and we found that there might be synergy there with the city and our sports teams where we, where we can make better inroads and better usage of, I guess you could say, the opportunity to make sports available to our community.
You. Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Yes, yesterday was the sewer authority meeting. That one, there's a lot of projects that are getting started after the bond issuance that had recently occurred, so they are pumping things along. They were excited about our approval of the incinerator that we had done last month because that was a big dividing spot as they were trying to figure out how to make sure that everything was taken care of. And that ended up coming out of ARP money, but we will still get our fair share back. So they were excited about that. As the liaison for Public Works, we had a fun couple of weeks here. We did a recycling audit. So for those of you that recycle, you know, we take your plastic and paper products, and what happened was over the course of a week, the refuse department picked up 50 houses' recycling items, brought them to a warehouse, let them sit for a little while, and then myself and our sustainability coordinator and two of the refuse guys, a couple of truck drivers, went through and we counted every bag. We held up the bag, we looked to see if it was like all qualified recycling material, and if it wasn't, then the whole bag got thrown away. So I didn't bring my calendars today or any props, but it was, it was kind of, it was really exciting. I mean, for spending an hour sifting through everyone's garbage, it was more exciting than I should probably let on. The things that get your, 45% of the recycled bags that are set out actually go to recycling. Another 55%, the other 55% get thrown in the garbage truck because they're contaminated. So that was the count after the huge mound. We all took friendly, good sport bets on it, no money was handled. And some of the biggest offenders, just as FYI, is like, you think about the containers that your egg cartons come in, you know, you might have the plastic kind, you might have the paper fiber kind, or you might have the styrofoam kind. Well, it's only the paper fiber ones that are recyclable, the other two aren't. The plastic ones are not the right kind of recyclable plastic. Your tubs for cottage cheese, is that my timer? What timer is that? Do I have a timer? Kathy, are you putting a timer on me? Wrap this up, Chuck. Anyways, so the to-go containers that are plastic with the clear top, those are food contaminated, pizza boxes with cardboard, and we are looking at doing a little recycling pilot in June to see if we could expand our services. And this goes back to us taking care of budget issues because of the refuse fee that we were looking at last year, seeing if we could lower that down a little bit. So we're rolling out a pilot in conjunction with Barron in June that's coming together pretty nicely, and I'm looking forward to updating you further on that. That's it.
That is great work. Okay, Mr. Troop?
Madam President, can you hear me? Yesterday, I did attend a redevelopment authority meeting. Had to make sure I pronounced that right. No new, nothing new to report there, but I am meeting with Aaron tomorrow from there, and we're going to, and he's going to answer any questions that I have. So if you have any questions that you'd like me to ask him, please feel free to email those to me.
Great. Mr. Witherspoon?
Thank you, Madam President.
I do have a couple things to say, I was going to follow you up, Mel, but you won that one. I would like to publicly thank both Ms. Sandberg and Mr. Wells for taking the time to give us a real nice overview of the Port Authority and of the Civic Center. They also reached out, Mr. Troop, when you're available, go 101, I'll go with you, and we'll get the tour. I knew you couldn't get away, okay? That being said, I want to wish everybody a very happy, happy Thanksgiving. I just, let's see if anybody's listening. Everybody gives Thanksgiving for St. Patrick's Day. Genealogy says I'm 96% Polish. Tomorrow, I'm 100% Irish. Love it. Have a good one.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things here. One is that we will have a study session next Thursday, March 24th, getting in, out, and around Erie with the Director of the Airport Authority and the Director of EMTA. Everybody, if you're interested in stormwater, how those policies will be developed on mitigation, the city is looking for Stormwater Advisory Committee members, and that notice is on the city's website. Really great work tonight, kind of on the fly in coming up with some solutions to some... Really great work tonight, kind of on the fly in coming up with some solutions to some problems or challenges. My old boss always used to say, there were challenges, not problems. Our committee structure is still in the process of evolving. I checked, I think I've said a couple of times, I've been a big fan of the city of Lancaster, which seems to have a very efficient and effective city government, just from what I've seen. Met a couple of people and been there once, but I noticed that they have committees that meet once, once a month, so there's one kind of committee meeting. I know, you know, there was some frustration tonight that we didn't get to discuss everything that we had to do before we came out here. We'll get there. We will get there. I think we're going to get there. We're going to figure out how to keep doing a better job of communicating. I also found it interesting, I think some of you probably saw the story about former Mayor Joe Sinnett, I don't know if he got approved or not, but had been becoming the administrator for Cleveland Heights. So I looked at the Cleveland Heights website and they have some really cool committees in Cleveland Heights, so I don't know if we'll learn anything from Cleveland Heights, but I'm still looking, working on that. I mentioned, you know, how to help Ukraine. I know there was a story on TV tonight about the warehouse that is accepting a lot of specific items. They're going to be doing that again on Saturday. I found out about that on the Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network Instagram page, but I'm sure it's being posted elsewhere. Representative Bob Murfsky also has some collections going on, so make sure you, you know, find those things on social media. At our last meeting, Mr. Brzezinski, you know, we're talking about, first of all, how do you make sure we listen to the voices out there, but how do we all have an equal voice here? And we talked about, I've been trying to rotate who goes first on committee reports, but Mr. Brzezinski also talked about, can we rotate who votes when? Because sometimes you find yourself in the awkward position of being the first person to vote on a, you know, what could be a dicey issue. But it turns out that our tote boards, our tote board there works again. Hadn't worked, we had never used it in my first term on council. Mel has asked us to learn, figure out how to do this. We're going to, we can do it right now, Lori? All right, so what do I do?
Um, underneath, some of yours are backwards already to the thing.
Ah!
This one?
Yeah. Yeah, you can just go like that.
Oh, now it's not clicking back and forth.
Is this one going to be here?
You voted and you showed it.
Okay, is that what happens? You click, turn it on? And then you go like that and watch it happen?
We'll help you, Lori.
But I think we're doing this for a few, and a lot of committees, like, what's that grain of your loss with your name that someone hasn't ever used this before at all?
And even thinking about, you know, making sure that, you know, people who might be hearing impaired, since we don't speak our votes out loud, we have a, I thanked Fredder who always reminds us about mobility and access. So we learned something every meeting from the people who appear before us. Oh, that which reminds me, we did have a session with Pendot. It was in caucus, I'm sorry it wasn't out here. We really have a lot of stuff on our schedule, but we learned some interesting things, including about the timeline for that Holland Street Bridge, which according to what we got from Pendot now, that's not in the works until 2025. So I said, speaking as a journalist, that was kind of burying the lead. We thought that that was going to be in the initial stage of that project, so pay attention to what's coming up. I believe that Pendot said we'll be having some more public sessions coming up. They also presented information about looking in response to Ed Kissel's suggestions about how to increase access on the East Side and some maybe interesting dollars possibly coming in to work on the Amtrak station. So it was a lot of information compacted into a short amount of time, but Pendot is working hard to increase communication with us.
Madam President, can I interrupt you one second?
Sure, I'm done.
Did you get anything back from Mr. Brennan yet on Mr. Hagan's sign?
I did. He sent me an email and I'll forward it to you. So he, he has a whole timeline. I can send that to you.
Thank you.
All right, now we go to, do we have, is Teresa here online or anything? We go to our next guest.
I have nothing.
You have nothing? Okay.
I have a couple of things. First of all, we're now accepting applications for the Stormwater Credit Advisory Committee that'll advise us on, you know, the need for that stormwater fee. We're looking for 10 to 12 volunteers for that. They'll probably have to serve for about six months. We expect them to have four two-and-a-half-hour meetings starting in April, probably run April through July, those meetings. So we're accepting applications now for anyone interested in participating in that and that'll be till April 1st and then we'll decide who's going to be on it and move forward. The SPCP Trust Building Series has started again and that's where a group of people from our SPCP Council, a lot of policemen, including the Chief of Police, myself, and several people that have been in trouble with the law, mostly people of color, but who have turned their lives around. And we, we went to East Middle School a month ago on February 16th. We were at Bishop Brock's place today and we had about 20 kids there, had a great conversation with them. And the conversations really created a great relationship between these kids and the police. I don't know that that's ever happened before and it just, it felt really good again today. Want to make sure you all know that Erie Downtown Partnership, John Bookner resigned from that and Emily Fetczko is temporarily running it. And I don't know if this is public knowledge yet or not, but the EDDC, John Persinger, they've suggested they might be, make sense for them to merge with the Erie Downtown Partnership. I have mixed feelings about that, to be very honest, but there's conversations going on about that and Emily Fetczko is serving as the acting director. They're planning to, you know, at some point post it and have people apply, but I just wanted to make you all aware what's going on there, in case you weren't. Today, I guess it was yesterday, I went to the opening of the Flight Ship City Public Market. It's definitely pretty incredible what's going on down there. I was very impressed with that. Yeah, that was on, actually that was on Tuesday, yeah. We do want to improve diversity, equity, and inclusion in Erie. That's the top priority of me and my administration. And, you know, we hired strategic consulting partners, I think you're all aware of that. And we should have recommendations from them by the end of this year in terms of what we need, what we need to change, what we should look at, what we should do to make everyone feel like a welcome part of Erie regardless of their race, religion, color of skin, gender, you know, everybody should be treated equally. As you know, we got about $76 million in ARP funds and you'll be getting a lot of proposals for that money over the next several months, I would say at least. And appreciate your help and I know there's a lot to try to understand. We try to give you as much information as we can and we'll, we'll continue to do that. It's not easy. I think we're learning as we go, to be very honest. Nobody's ever had $76 million with rules about how you spend it because you can't just spend it anyway. But we want to do it in the most effective way that's going to make Erie better for everybody. And I think that's everything I had.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anything else for the good of the order? I think we can adjourn, correct, Lori?
City Council adjourns at 9:04 PM. Mr. Brzezinski, Ms. Flores, Mr. Keys, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Troop, Mr. Witherspoon, Ms. Allen.